Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mrs. Castillo?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mrs. Mogulman?
Here.
That's the additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. Dr. Senti, I believe we have deletion of 13.02 preliminary discussions from the Transportation Department, is that correct?
Correct.
Citizen statements, I believe there are none on the sign-up sheet. Approval of the agenda for October 6, 2010 may have a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Resolutions. This week we have National School Lunch Week, America's Safe Schools Week, and National Bus Safety Week. May have a motion and a second to approve those resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Communications, 9.01. Update on the superintendent search process. I think we are down to three remaining focus groups in the next 10 days. And then the school board will have a closed session on October 27th, and where we will finalize the profile and move forward to interviews in December timeframe, is that right? Okay. And there are updates available as they occur on the website, should you be that interested. 9.02, calendar meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, November 10. That was originally published as November 3rd, by the way, 2010, at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 PM. 9.03, liaison reports. Anyone? Mrs. Mogulman?
Last week, for two days, we had steering committee meetings for Project Parkway. And the second day in the morning, we were all assigned to a student, and we were able to shadow a student for the morning. And I'd like to thank Erin, an eighth grade student at Northeast Middle, who allowed me to follow her around. I got a lot of funny looks from other students, but I just sat in the back of the room and watched her. It was very interesting to watch. We were just supposed to observe the students' reactions, and whether they were engaged in their classroom work, were they distracted, were they, you know, participating, that sort of thing. And it was just really interesting, and I have to say, I was exhausted, even though it was a morning, just a morning. Those kids work hard, so it was great. And I'd like to thank the staff at Northeast Middle for having me.
Okay. Tom?
Well, I just wanted to say that I, by chance, happened to witness the Parkway North Viking marching band perform at the Edward Jones Dome. They did the Star Spangled Banner for the Rams game. I think it was the opener, too. Home opener, so.
Great. Mrs. Castillo?
Thank you. I'm going to take everybody back in time, because I had promised the students from the Student Legislative Forum that we had last month, that I would mention their names, because they took the time and they were very enthusiastic in participating. So I'm going to take, and I'll try to do this in one minute, thank all the students that I had the privilege of sitting with during that forum. And I promised them, and some of them called me and said, "You didn't say anything." And I said, "Well, I forgot the list." So, here we go. Thank you to Michael Bozarth, Alex Pinder, Andy Dalen, Joe Estman, Evan Block, Aaron Zuckerman, Danny Goldsmith, Adam Lawrence, Adam Kirschbaum, Daru Davay, Bilal Khudre, Ty Adelstein, Givante Suber, Shaquille Suber, Jenna Baker, Phil Posley, number 55, Parkway North on the football team. Donovan Newsom, number 40, on the Parkway North football team. Megan Green, Lauren Kay, Alexis Bivens, and Kayla Ellis. I really appreciated their support in everything they had to contribute to that forum. It was very interesting and informative for them, as well as me.
Last Friday, Mrs. Mogulman and I had the opportunity to attend the Religious Leaders' Meeting, which is a meeting that's comprised of local, area, community religious leaders. And we really spanned every religion that I could think of, at least. And we had some good dialogue. We had a wonderful presentation from Lisa Greenstein about character, yeah, character education, thank you. And then this group also participated in one of our focus groups, and it was really interesting. They had a different take on things. They were coming from some different places than some of the groups that I had heard before, so. It's my first time at the Religious Leaders' Meeting, and I really enjoyed it.
Mr. Jacob?
Thank you. I'm a Parkway West enthusiast, so I don't want to talk about other schools' football teams this year. A few days ago, we had an opportunity to sit down with the City of Chesterfield and stages, and all of your Parkway board members were there, too. This is an opportunity to establish even stronger relationships, partnerships, perhaps, with stages, professional theater people that would be able to reach out and touch our children, and some of our faculty, too, to help them have a really professional experience. So we're just in the initial stages of that. It was a great meeting, a two-hour meeting. We learned a lot about what they hope to do here in this part of the county. It'd be a tremendous boon to everything we do here, and they're very interested. So that's just in the initial stages. Thank you, Dr. Senti, for helping get that set up, and I'm hopeful that it will be something that we'll be able to use. Everybody seems to be pretty excited. We just need to sit down now and figure out if there's things that we can all do that are win-win for each other, so. Appreciated that.
Thank you, and I'll certainly second those thoughts. I thoroughly enjoyed the stages presentation, and a pretty amazing facility they're contemplating out there in the far western edge of the Parkway School District. And literally, you could throw a rock from that site into Rockwood, so, not that we'd ever do that. All right. 10.0, action items. May have a motion and a second to approve the action items 10.01 through 10.20.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or items that should be pulled to action or closed? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next up, report. Item 12, the annual achievement report. Call on Dr. Collins, Coordinator of Assessment.
Who were wondering if it was something instead?
I know, I know. I was waiting when all those rows were empty, so this is good. President Major, Vice President Jacob, Dr. Senti, Ms. Calanda, Board of Directors, good evening. I know many of you have been aware of our synergy theme the past two or three years. Our goal was to bring departments, schools, teachers, administrators together to support common goals. Tonight, we offer you a new theme and a new pin. Very good. Together, everyone achieves more. Team. Not only do we give you a team pin, but we are prepared to share data as evidence that the Parkway team is strong and getting stronger in helping all of our students achieve. The quote on your pin and displayed on the screen states, "Working together, everyone contributes a signature strength. Our collaboration allows us to achieve amazing results, making us more successful than we could ever imagine." We are so happy that some of our administrators and teachers were able to join us tonight, because together, we can achieve amazing results for all students. Hannah Woods, you are making me cry. So now, I would like to introduce a new member of the Parkway team, Dr. Julie Collins. Her signature strengths, she's a great communicator, she's an idea person, she can see a better way of accomplishing goals, she is strategic, and she is fun to be around. I would like to introduce you to Dr. Julie Collins, Parkway's Assessment Coordinator. She did not mention a strength is good with microphones, so. President Major, Vice President Jacob, Dr. Senti, Ms. Calanda, and Board of Directors. It is my privilege to be here this evening and to be a part of this very special team. It's wonderful to be able to come into a district that has outstanding results and be able to report those results. Next year, I might be able to take a little more credit, but this year, it's the people behind me that deserve the credit for that. Let's go ahead and get started here, looking at our report. And you have a couple of things in front of you that may help you visually. You have a bound copy of the report, the formal report that is part of the board site. And as well, I have given you the copy of the slides, so that you could follow through with those as well, and make notes if you choose to do that. And we will have time for questions at the end. The first thing I'd like to point out, as you're aware, is that this report has typically been delivered in February. And in fact, when I came on board, Kathy let me know that we'd have a February achievement report, and I thought, oh, plenty of time to prepare. Not so much, because we have moved that up to fall. But there's a great reason for that, and I really am pleased with the change. The change allows the timeliness of the data. We've just gotten back our high-stakes achievement results in math, and of course, ACT, AP exams. And we also have our preliminary annual performance report from the state. It is still in preliminary form, but we do have results able to share for that as well. So, very timely, and the fact that we can kick off our year with those results, as we use those to plan for the year ahead, is really an advantage. So there are a few things that we'll be leaving out that you might be used to hearing. We're doing fall testing right now for the Stanford Assessments Plan and Explore, so those will not be a part of tonight's report. As you look at the screen, you see the Parkway House, and what a wonderful structure that's been created here in terms of mission, vision, and learning principles is the foundation of the work here in Parkway. Tonight's report will focus on this level of the house. It really is two levels, the curriculum and assessment system that supports the work in the schools, and the instructional programs and practices that achieve the results. So we'll be focused on that part of our Parkway House tonight. As you know, the strategic plan for the district includes a goal for increasing academic achievement engagement for all students. And Area C within that achievement goal says that we will collect, analyze, and use data from national, state, and Parkway assessments to monitor curriculum, inform instruction, and implement academic interventions to increase student achievement. So we will be hearing about those things tonight. There are three critical questions that will be answered in tonight's report, and as well as any follow-up questions that you might have from that point. The first one, what are the accountability measures by which we monitor our progress? And I'm really going to spend a little bit of time teaching or reminding you and all of us about what those structures are, that we have to gauge our accountability. It's not just one aspect of accountability, but actually three levels of accountability that we monitor our progress through. Secondly, we'll hear a little bit about our student population, our demographics, and how our population in Parkway has changed, or not, over the last five years. And finally, and probably most central to the report, is how well are we performing as a district? Let's move first to the accountability measures. And if you take a look at the graphic, you'll notice that there are three distinct systems or measures by which we analyze our results. The first one, you hear a lot about, it's probably the most publicized in terms of the media, and that is our adequate yearly progress, our federal accountability system. That is generated by the No Child Left Behind Act, that you're well familiar with. And so that's one measure, and we'll talk more about that specifically when we get to that part of the report, but that's one measure by which we gauge our effectiveness with student results. Another measure, and we've already discussed briefly, that those preliminary results have just come in, is our annual performance report. That's our state accountability measure. There are actually 14 separate standards, as you may know, regarding that, with regard to our Missouri School Improvement Program, and that provides us our district accreditation. Our third method is just as important as the other two. In fact, in some ways, some might argue it's more important, and that's our Parkway accountability. We don't just rely on our federal or state mandates or legislation to gauge our success. We set specific goals as a district that we expect to hold ourselves accountable to, and we'll be hearing about some of those tonight as well, as we analyze these results. Looking first at our student population data. Our enrollment, you can see very sharply, one of the reasons for going visual with data is so that you can get that visual picture, and immediately you can see that over time, and I know you're well aware of this, the enrollment in Parkway has declined over the last five years. There is an increase of just a few students this past year, from 2009 to 2010, of about 15 students. But over time, we have declined a little over 1,300 students since 2006. There are two visuals here with regard to our district demographics. Actually, our demographics have changed little. This, I may not be a surprise to you, but coming into the district, I thought perhaps the demographics had changed. And I'm just going to kind of drop in these numbers for you to see that over the five years that we are looking at this data, we've had really very little change among our various ethnicities. Indian, by the way, would refer to Native American students, and don't really register because we have so few Native American students. But overall, over the last five years, we've had just a slight increase, 2.1% increase in students of color over that time. Our next demographics talks about free and reduced lunch students, students with IEPs or Individualized Educational Plans, Special Education students, and then students with limited English proficiency. And you can see with that, with free and reduced lunch, we had the largest increase this past year. Moving from 2009 to 2010, we experienced a 3.5% increase. Over time, over the five years, it's a 4.1% increase in students receiving free and reduced lunch services. Students with an Individualized Educational Program really peaked in 2008 at 18.2% of our total student population, and over time, has increased 7.7%, but remained stable between 2009 and 2010. And in terms of our students with limited English proficiency, steadily increased, 2.3% over time, so not a huge increase, but we have increased in that population over the last five years. We're going to move from our student population to our achievement results, and as I mentioned at the onset, these are the assessments that we'll be talking about within the presentation tonight. And at this point, we're looking closely at the adequate yearly progress segment of our accountability system. The results, and you see those in red, in terms of which assessments we look at to gauge our success there. We look at the MAP, so the Math and Communication Arts in particular are the measures by which adequate yearly progress is calculated. In high school, it's the Algebra I and English II and, of course, exams. And then that is disaggregated data, as you know, in terms of subgroup performance. A little bit of information about adequate yearly progress, some things that we wanted to remind you as we head into the segment of the report. First of all, we know that districts and schools are accountable for all students as a total, and that is one subgroup, or considered a group, is that total group. But in addition, each subgroup of students, and I'll talk about which specific subgroups are calculated within that, must all meet the annual target. One piece of information I wanted to make sure that you saw, because you'll see some data coming up that looks like the group may not have made the target. You don't have to exactly make the target. There are some other ways to gain accountability, or to gain a met status for a particular group. If you've improved in a group by a significant percentage, that's called safe harbor. There's confidence interval, which is accounting for the standard error of the test, is applied. Also, the state calculates growth. If we've made enough growth with a student group, so that they're meeting the target based on growth, they don't actually have to meet the proficiency standard. So there are a few other ways that we can make a subgroup without having actually met that target of proficiency. As I know, we're all very well aware, those targets, in terms of what we have to meet each year, do increase over time. They started out fairly low. They were pretty easy to meet initially at the onset of No Child Left Behind, but the targets do increase up to 100%, an expectation of 100% of our students being proficient or advanced by 2014. Again, we do get to count those other measures as a part of that, but still, that's, it's quite a hefty challenge, as you know. The subgroups, as defined by No Child Left Behind, to have a subgroup means that you have 30 or more students within the categories that are designated, which include the five ethnicities, and those are the federal designated ethnicities, Special Education students, students with limited English proficiency, students receiving free and reduced lunch, and total group make up the subgroups. And so if you have 30 or more within your school, you would then have enough students to make a subgroup. And then from there, you would be determined whether you were met or not met. My point in saying that, I wanted you to take a look, it's a little hard to see the exact numbers here, but just visually, you can get an idea. As a district, we have eight subgroups total that we are accountable for in terms of our entire school district. But you can see, as you look down the list, that some schools do not have as many subgroups as other schools, based on either the size of their total school population not being enough to comprise 30 students or more in a particular group, or because of limited diversity. If you don't have a lot of diversity within your school, you then will not have a lot of subgroups. Interestingly, and I wanted to point this out, you'll see that we have two schools, South High and West Middle, that have a different number of subgroups, depending on whether they're math or communication arts. So even that can happen, as you have different numbers of students in the different groups that are tested. We have some outstanding results to share, although we'd always like to be completely met in all subgroups, but we do have some very good news in terms of Parkway as a district with our annual adequate yearly progress. In Communication Arts, 18 of our 28 schools met for all the subgroups. In math, 17 schools met for all subgroups. 20 Parkway schools either have No Child Left Behind sanctions, in other words, we know that sanctions come in if you're not performing over a certain amount of time, up to the levels that are required, or they have, through their improved performance, delayed sanctions. And in fact, tonight, we're going to highlight some specific schools that are receiving federal funding, so they are kind of on that eligible for sanctions, so to speak, who have either delayed or removed themselves from sanctions through their efforts with students and their results. The only bad news in terms of our performance is that we do have, we do have gaps, and you'll see those tonight as we walk through some data. Even the schools that have met the calls this year and have removed themselves from any likelihood of sanctions, still do have gaps that they're addressing in terms of various subgroups performing below the total group. We'll talk first about our district results, and hopefully you can see that either by virtue of your packet or taking a look at the screen. Wanted to point out, just as you're looking at this, the annual target is in red, so you can see the sharp incline, how that started out, and you have the annual target numbers here. So it started out in 2006 at 34.7%. And when we talk about a target, I think I've referenced this, but want to make sure that you're understanding, that means students who would be proficient or advanced would be the expectation. So we're looking at that at 34.7 in 2006, and this past year, 67.4 was the mark that we had to attain in order to be proficient. The white line refers to the total group. Okay? So you can see where Parkway as a total group was rather what we call flatlined in the data business until 2008, and you see that trend line, and I really want you to start to notice these, and I'm sure you will as we work through the graphs, notice how those trend lines point upward. That's just an excellent sign for the district in terms of performance and moving in the right direction. And then based on the color coding, you can see which groups, and we do have subgroups. In fact, this one's very hard to see. The free and reduced lunch is actually hidden within this area here, but we do have groups that are falling below the target, and falling well below what our total performance is. In math, pretty much the same story in terms of just taking a look at the red bar, which is your annual target line, looking at the total bar, and you can see that we started out well above that target. We really need to keep that incline. That's our goal, is to keep those numbers moving in the right direction in terms of our math performance and our end-of-course performance. But we are still well above the bar for white students and for total, as well as for Asian students. We do have challenges in terms of other subgroups that are falling below that line, and show us that we have achievement gaps that still exist. I want to take some time, and at the end of this, I'll actually ask that you recognize in a small way, the schools that are here tonight. We've asked them to come to be a part of this as we highlight some results, because we know these results are very challenging, difficult to attain, and take a very concentrated school improvement effort in order to achieve. Just a real quick snapshot at McKelvey Elementary, and just, you can read through how they've progressed over the years. 2007, they were not met. 2008, and remember, that target keeps going up, so if you're not met at one point, it's an even steeper incline to try to get to the target. However, with their last two years, they've been met in both content areas, and as a result, they are, they have no sanctions. They're completely out of the woods, so to speak, as long as that performance keeps climbing. Just a visual quickly of their Communication Arts, and I won't read through all the numbers, I know that you can do that at some other point, but really, just take a look at where the graphs start to drop and where they start to climb. And as you kind of just look for, if you can imagine a trend line just running through there, it's very clear that McKelvey, even though they still have subgroups, as we mentioned at the district level, still have subgroups below where we would want them, they're all trending in the right direction with their performance. And as you take a look at the 2010 performance, you'll see some very significant increases with the percentage of students that are proficient and advanced. In mathematics, the same story. And again, it's very difficult, and you'll see this trend start to happen, where a school is focused on an area, like mathematics seems to be an area of need, they focus, then they kind of drop back in the other content area. It's really, really difficult to get both areas headed in the right direction, as you can imagine. And so it's a tribute to the staff and the work of the students at that school, that they're able to see that, again, with that trending in the right direction, and just making some tremendous progress with some of their subgroups as well. Pyramid Elementary, their story since 2006, they were not met in Communication Arts and Math in 2006. And here's one that kind of goes back and forth. Kathy's here tonight, she's probably smiling behind me. Met in math, met in math, then met in Communication Arts, but 2010, such a celebration, they, with their hard work, they are met in Communication Arts and Math, and as a result, have no sanctions through Title I. Visually, Communication Arts, and I think I included data even if it did not make a subgroup, if I had enough data to include, so you may actually see more bars than they have subgroups, but, you know, still some challenges. IEP students, and that is a district challenge, as you've probably noticed, IEP students a little bit leveled off here, so we want that bar to continue to head up. You know, and I'm talking about the direction on the bars, and meanwhile, I know what the staff is thinking about, and what I'm thinking about is the hard work it takes. It's each and every student achieving at high levels, so next year, that we can see that bar going up still in the right direction. In mathematics, same story, you know, it's interesting, the graphics tell the story. If you look at total group, kind of a peak, then a valley, but then up again in the right direction. So it really takes time to implement, and I'm not prepared to talk about all the things that each school has done, but I'm sure the principals will be glad to share what some of their strategies were in terms of getting that performance moved in the right direction. Hannah Woods Elementary, in 2006, not met in either subject. 2007, they did meet in Communication Arts, but again, both 2008 and 2009, not met in either area. And what a huge success, what a huge success, that in 2010, through the efforts that they made last year, they are met in both content areas, and this is a rare occurrence. Kathy Blackmore attended the superintendent's conference, and people were kind of, I'm saying flocking around her, I'm not sure that was exactly the visual, but I imagine they were, because people flock to Kathy. And just saying, you know, how did, how did this school get this done? Because a lot of times, with that target line continuing to move in one direction, no matter how hard you work, you're still behind that curve, and they managed to do that, and that's a tremendous success for that school and those kids. And just, I like looking at these. Look at the directional trend on those. Headed in the right direction. Some subgroups, you know, still below the bar, but as long as, remember, I mentioned the safe harbor and confidence, as long as they keep moving all of their groups, and all, which means all their kids, in the right direction, they're going to be fine. And I know they're prepared to do that. I bet they're nodding behind me. Not nodding. know they're prepared to do that. I bet they're nodding behind me. Not nodding off, that's something different. Hannah Woods, math subgroup performance as well, trending in the right direction. Had some challenges, you know, you see these dramatic peaks and then some valleys, but right now, moving in the right direction, and they know what they're doing, and they have a plan, and I think that's just tremendous. Like to highlight as well, some secondary schools. South Middle, in 2006, not met in comm arts. In 2007 through 2009, not met in either of the content areas. 2010, met in both. That's a quick turnaround in a way. I mean, I know it seems like several years, and I know it probably seemed longer to Craig, but when you can get that done, it's a tremendous accomplishment. And even though they're not a Title I school and do not suffer sanctions, trust me and you know, they take it seriously. Here's the South Middle Communication Arts subgroup performance, and you can see just, again, just the trends and how they're headed. This is a school that, if I'm not mistaken, they increased in every single subgroup from last year, some of them dramatically. Limited English proficient students from seventy percent proficient, which is a very good number, by the way, but up to eighty percent. So when you see every subgroup improving, you know that good things are happening. Mathematics as well, just some really good work at South. And our last highlight tonight, Central High School. Again, taking a look at performance over time, not met in 2006 in math, not met in both comm arts and math in 2007 and 2008, and now met in both. And that's been a two-year trend. I do want to point out, and I did need to notate it on the slide, the end-of-course exams did help for a couple of reasons with our school's performance in high school. One being that teachers really never, and Dr. Senti says this, they never really bought into the math at high school. It was a grade span test, so it kind of felt distant from the current instruction that they were delivering. End-of-course exams, a little more personal. It's my course. It's Algebra I, it's my kids, English II, my kids that are in front of me, and I'm responsible. So I think that has definitely been a positive trend that you see in the state and also here in Parkway. Also, and I really would be negligent not to mention this, and we know this, that the standards did change from math, which were more stringent standards, to end-of-course. So we see, in fact, I'll just show you the data. We do see that in 2008, when end-of-course exams were implemented, or before they were implemented, you know, we had kind of performance down here. And then in 2009, that peaked. Nonetheless, in comm arts, isn't as dramatic a story for Central High as math is, but you can see they had really nice gains in so many subgroups. One here is going in the wrong direction, but I know they'll turn that around. We were just at their school today with their school improvement planning team, and really some very concentrated work in terms of student mastery at Central High. And then for mathematics, just really nice increases, again, from 2009 to 2010, everything trending in the right direction. And at this time, I really would like all of the principals, administrators, I know some teachers came, I would just really like for them to stand, be recognized for just a moment by the board. So, that's our story in AYP, and it's a pretty good story, and I'm glad to be able to tell it. For our annual performance report, we have to put on a different hat. This is our state accountability system. In this case, and I kind of make that flash for you there, and you can look at what's in red. The state does look at fourteen standards, and I'll show you those in just a moment, but they're still looking at math, they're still looking at end-of-course, but in a different way. So it's very confusing. It's hard to explain to people that we have adequate yearly progress, and we have to make that. At the same time, we have state accreditation, and we of course want to be accredited, and in our case, accredited with distinction. We have the distinction in performance that we have earned over the last several years. They do look at subgroup performance, but not as stringently as adequate yearly progress. It is its own standard, and I'll talk about that in a moment. They also look at ACT performance, and then there are other district measures that are a part of that. Here are the standards. So they break down by level, the state assessments for elementary, middle, and also by the content areas. And then I kind of slid it in there, and I didn't really emphasize it, but we are also able to receive bonus points for our science scores, which we did as a district. ACT, advanced courses, career education, college placement, career ed placement, graduation rate, attendance rate, and subgroup achievement, all being a part of our state accreditation. Our preliminary results, just as a summary, we have met all fourteen of those standards, and we have earned for the tenth consecutive year, distinction in performance as a school district, something to be very proud of. All six performance standards related to math grade level or end-of-course assessment were not only met, but demonstrated an increase from 2009 to 2010. The percentage of graduates scoring at or above the national average, which is how that standard is calculated, in Parkway, it's sixty-four point nine percent scoring at or above the national average, which well exceeds the standard, which is thirty-two point eight percent of graduates attaining that level. And subgroup performance is kind of buried within this, but in our case, we have met twelve of sixteen subgroups qualifying for high achievement according to the state results. Let's start with a little bit about ACT, and I, because this is the part of the presentation that we'll talk about ACT, not all of this is directly tied back to the accreditation standards, but wanted to insert the pertinent information about ACT that you would be interested in. And what you'll see on this visual is that Parkway, and if you just focus on the blue, is performing well above, and this one, we've included the benchmark score. ACT is designated a particular score by content area at which students would be expected to be highly successful in their college studies, or college readiness is what that's actually called. So within that, you can see that Parkway's numbers are well exceeding the purple bar, which would be the benchmark score. The only one where we're not, we're barely below in science. And actually, if you take a look at the data, you can see that as we compare ourselves also to Missouri and national, they're struggling with that one as well. So the science benchmark is just hard to meet. We continue to try to work in that area to improve performance there. A little closer look at college readiness in terms of the percentage of our students that are reaching those goals. Very high numbers in English. Eighty-six percent of all Parkway students who take the ACT are meeting or exceeding the national benchmark number. For the composite, forty-three percent, which, you know, we'd like that to be higher, but it is compared to, when you look at where Missouri and the nation is, we're far exceeding both the state and the nation in terms of our college readiness. Those are the circles that show you that we're far exceeding that. This one actually, this is a representation of what I've already actually told you, which is the fact that we are well exceeding the standard in terms of percentage of graduates scoring at or above the national average. In fact, we're exceeding the state standard by twenty-five point eight percent, and have shown an increase, as you can see, from 2009 to 2010, in terms of the percent of graduates scoring at that mark. So outstanding performance in terms of our ACT. Compared to our national scores, you can see that the red bars indicate Parkway's performance as it exceeds national scores in every content area, every subtest, as well as the composite. We also want to take a look at our disaggregated data for other assessments. The state does not do this in terms of the Missouri School Improvement Program. We are not required to meet any particular marks by race or ethnicity. So this would fall into one of those categories where we are obligated to take a look at, as Parkway, we want to make sure that we don't leave students behind. The bar represents, or the red line that I just kind of flashed up there, would represent where we would want all subgroups to be. It's where, it's where our total group is. And you can see just visually, we are not meeting that for our African-American students. We're a little bit under that total group bar for Hispanic students as well. But we know this is an area that we need to continue to work on. We want the data out there, we want people understanding the data, and that we do have challenges with ensuring that we are educating all students. As you know, last year was the first year that Parkway participated in district choice ACT testing, meaning that all juniors were administered the test, and we had a little bit over ninety-five percent participation in terms of our junior class. And I know that was an incredible undertaking. I know Desi Kirchhoff deserves incredible amount of credit, as well as those folks in the building that worked with that. Whoops. And you can see that this is our, these are our juniors, so they have not yet had a chance to get additional tutoring. They haven't taken all the coursework that they will eventually take. We know that many of these students will take the ACT again, they'll score even higher. But when you compare Parkway's all juniors to the national, or actually Missouri graduates, you can see how much better we're performing, even with our students when we had all of them take the assessment. Next year will be the first year of graduating class data where we actually see the impact of the results. And to be honest, we do expect that we'll see a little bit of a decline next year in terms of our total group, just because we included students in this testing that maybe wouldn't have tested at all otherwise. But we still have time for those students, and many of them will. They will, you know, receive additional instruction, and they will take the assessment on their own. But what a great initiative here in Parkway, that we're giving that assessment to all juniors. And we're doing that again this year. Moving from ACT to attendance, and you can see that, here's the MCIP performance standard of ninety-four point four percent of annual average attendance. Parkway is at the high performance standard level, ninety-five percent, and holding steady over the last couple of years at a very, that's a very high attendance rate. It's outstanding. In terms of graduation rate, also, taking a look of comparing Parkway performance to the MCIP performance standard of eighty-nine point six, Parkway is well above the bar in terms of that. Our graduation rate, ninety-four percent. Moving from the annual performance report to Parkway accountability, as I mentioned at the onset, it isn't enough that we're accountable to federal measures, state measures, but we also hold ourselves accountable under setting various goals that we expect to meet. We take a look at our AP results, and we also, there'll be a little bit about district common assessments, not as much results, but it is something that we use internally to gauge our performance along the way, and hopefully intervene for kids so that we can get them to even higher levels. Parkway's assessment goals adopted by this board a couple of years ago, my understanding, are that we will rank at a minimum in the top five out of the twenty-four St. Louis County school districts for both end-of-course tests and map tests. And just to show you where we are with that, with English II, this past year, we ranked sixth, so very close to being in that top five. Algebra I, we ranked eighth, and biology, out of end-of-course was the area that we've actually met that goal. When I say met the goal, I don't think any of us are really satisfied even being in that top five. So we're shooting even higher than that, but we are headed in the right direction in terms of our ranking with end-of-course exams. For math, taking a look at also being in the top five for communication arts, and it really, it's hard to summarize here, so bear with me, but you can kind of see we either rank eighth, ninth, sixth, or seventh, when we look at all of our map tests at grade levels. So we're not quite in that top five, closest to that at middle level. In mathematics, we're ranking either ninth, tenth, or seventh. So again, we're not quite to the goal that we've set for ourselves, but we are headed in the right trajectory on that. With science, we're either ranking ninth or seventh, when we look at our map results in grade five and eight. Want to talk just a little bit about our district common assessment. Again, this is not so much for the results portion. The results really, the benefit of those results are for teachers to make instructional changes. And we do have, over the last five years, as I understand it, our coordinators in communication arts, math, and science have been working on common assessments district-wide to really give teachers another measure of predictability. Do we know where kids are performing today? And more importantly, can we do something about that before we get to a high-stakes exam? And they're doing just that, and I think that this team would agree, that use of common assessment data has become increasingly powerful and has had a positive impact on performance. Just to explain a little bit about math common assessments, the way we implement them, they of course are based upon grade level expectations, but not all the grade level expectations, as those would be very hefty assessments. So those GLEs, as we call them, are prioritized so that the most important, critical standards are the ones that are frequently tested for kids. The math common assessment serves as benchmarks of performance over time. They become increasingly difficult throughout the year, so that kids are increasingly challenged, the same GLE, only at an increasing level of difficulty as they would move through, which really lets teachers see if kids are gaining in the right direction, or if they're slipping, falling a little bit behind. And I'll show you how those results actually look by the time they're in teachers' hands. And they are, as I said, progressively challenging throughout the year, so that by the time they're given that last benchmark in mathematics, it really has a very strong predictability in terms of their map performance. In fact, Nathan Tyson, who will be presenting later tonight, did a study that involved several predictive elements. But what he found, in taking a look at performance in grades three through five, with two thousand six hundred and fifty students tested, we were actually able to predict eighty-four point eight percent what that level of performance would be on the map test. So a very strong predictive element, and you can see what's highlighted in red for you, is that the math common assessments were a significant predictor of student performance. So very powerful tools that teachers are really starting to use, I think, probably more now than they ever have. As teachers use common assessment data, they ask some critical questions. And so what we always want is that our reporting matches the questions that the teachers would have, and allows them to have the data they would need to act instructionally on that. So here's an example, and it's, I know, a little hard to read, but this is an example of a report that has been developed by both Tim Hudson and the technology people who support PARs, and we're very grateful for those people, in terms of how do we look at, how is one student performing on the test? And just to get an idea of the elements that teachers take a look at, of course, here are the prioritized GLEs or grade level expectations that were tested. Really, you can see the strong curricular tie in that these are the ICAN statements, that students actually know what they're supposed to be able to do within that course, and teachers know what students are supposed to be able to do. So the ICAN statements. DOK referring to the depth of knowledge, the depth of complexity, in other words, and you probably know about that. The higher the level on a scale of one to four, the more complex that problem or question would be. The question type being either multiple choice or constructive response to mirror the expectations of the map testing. And then in this one student view, we're just taking a look at their score compared to the points possible. We can just get a quick summary down here at the bottom. Twenty-two points possible, that student earned twenty points. So that student's doing very well. And this happened to be an example from the pre-assessment, which is obviously given at the beginning of the year to gauge how the student has mastered the prior year content. How is my class performing would be another question that teachers would be able to answer through giving the common assessments and through analyzing the data. And this gives you a view of the class performance, as well as the district performance, based on those standards. So they really get a basis of comparison. And I'm having a hard time seeing that, and you probably are too, but as I look through this one, I really didn't try to cherry pick. I just picked whichever one kind of came up, and in this case, the class is doing better than the district average. So this is a good example, and I have redacted the name, so we can't tell who that is. But at least the pre-assessment, this teacher's job then will be to take those students beyond proficiency, which is sometimes even more challenging than trying to get them to be proficient. And then we also have reports that let us see one student's performance over time. So this report is called the Multiple Test Student Trend by GLE. So taking a look at performance over time, how is that student performing? And then also, you can get an idea of how are they performing on the common assessments, but also, every time they take the map, that level is put into this report as well. So really a nice individual student view for a teacher to be able to understand that student's performance. The last area, I believe, of emphasis tonight are the AP exams, the Advanced Placement Test for Parkway schools. And this is an area that we gauge for ourselves in terms of performance. It's not required, but we do that anyway. 2010, as you can see, marks the highest performance over any of the last five years. And in fact, we are three hundred and forty-three total tests, in terms of number of tests taken, higher than the prior year. So a very nice number, and we want that to keep increasing. We want our students to be engaged and involved in advanced placement testing. As you might have, excuse me, as you might have expected, if we have more tests taken, we have more... we have more students who are participating. And once again, you'll see that we have the highest number of any of the last five years testing this year, and that is 182 more than 2009. When we're talking about AP scores, and you're probably aware that we're really wanting students, there's a scale of one to five, and we really want our students, we really want them at fours and fives, but we will accept threes, fours, and fives. So we take a look at how many students or what percentage of scores were three or greater. And this is moving in the right direction. And we're moving up from 80% of scores of three or greater in 2008, moving up to 84% in 2010, which is really nice when you contrast that with, or compare it rather, the number of tests taken. As that increases, sometimes as you have more students participating, you start to see a decline in the results. We're seeing the opposite, more students participating and better results. And then also taking a look at our score distribution over the last five years. There's really been very little variation over time. However, there was a notable change from 2009 to 2010 in that fewer students earned a two. I'm trying to find that value here. So as you look from, in the purple area, we have fewer twos, which is good, and more threes. So really trending in the right direction in terms of percent of students or number of students scoring at those five score points. And at this time, we, and when I say "we," myself, but also the team behind me here that can probably answer any questions you might have regarding the data, or maybe the "how" behind the data, which they're much more familiar with than I am at this point. So we'll take your questions.
Okay. Ms. Mogulman?
This is really exciting. I really have the feeling, for the first time since I've been on the board, that everyone's working and moving together in the right direction. I haven't always felt that way, and I know a lot of you haven't either, but I just feel like we're all on board with this, and congratulations to all of you. I know it's been a struggle at many levels, but it's working. So congratulations to you. A question about the AP and the increase in students. Is that because we're offering more AP classes now than we used to, or just that more kids are interested in it?
My role in this part is to point to people who can answer the question. If there are any I can answer, I will.
And last year, for the first time, at Parkway South High School and Parkway North High, or I'm sorry, Parkway West High School, instead of having Honors World History for sophomores, we had AP World History as the Honors Choice. And we saw, of course, the increase of numbers of kids taking the AP. Also, the assessment department helped fund those tests, so the kids paid for half, and then Parkway paid for half because we needed to get baseline data. What we found from that test, the kids were like, "Oh, my gosh, this test is too, this class is too hard." Their sophomore's first AP test. What we found from that test, and you can see by the numbers going up, which is really exciting, was the kids did great. Yes, it was a hard class. It was rigorous, but they did great. So we saw that increase, and now we have great baseline data. And it looks like North High and Central High are thinking about moving in that direction as well.
Great. That's wonderful. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Mr. Appelbaum?
The only thing, it's like all the numbers are trending in the right direction, but something kind of caught my eye when, in the Parkway assessment with the MAP results. And it seems like the rankings kind of go up as you go up in class. Do you have any take on statistically why that may be, or?
You know, here's the hard thing about rankings. We're dependent on everyone else's performance. We've actually, you know, toyed with strategies that would involve throwing rocks. No, we have not. But, you know, it's really hard. You keep moving in the right direction, and you have to kind of depend on everyone else doing what they're doing. So I don't really have a statistical answer. I don't know if any of my colleagues would want to address that question.
There could be all kinds of explanations. I just, that was the only thing that really showed a trend that based on grade. You know, so, I mean, obviously, like I said, I just wondered if there was something that popped out in the statistics that really came to mind for you.
No. I mean, you're right.
Obviously, all the, all the, all the grade schools are improving along with all the other ones, but I just thought that was a little curious.
Yeah. It's just, it's hard with rankings. And in fact, Kathy knows, because she was at this meeting, the new District Assessment and Data Team, which is the assessment committee kind of revitalized maybe, we talked about, I mean, we put the goals back in front of the group, which is a pretty large group, about 60 staff members, and said, you know, "These are our goals." And we had a little bit of, you know, people discussed the fact that they didn't really like the fact that we were ranking. We talked about the fact that the reason the ranking is the way it is, is that Parkway should be performing within that top five. The board has every reason to expect that our performance will be there. And I see that we're moving in the right direction, but I don't think it will happen all at once. It won't just happen in one, you know, giant leap. It will probably happen incrementally, as you kind of noticed.
And we, and we've talked about this before, Tom, and I'm not sure you were on the board at the time. Did you see where Julie pointed out quite nicely that we had flatlined? And we flatlined a lot longer than our county districts that we compare ourselves to. And so we're catching up, and Dee's heard that. Most districts, as you look at their data, it's more like this. So even from the very beginning, when the target was lower, you'll see this trend, with some pops every once in a while. But when you started back here 10, 12, 15 years ago, when the Show Me standards were born, it's an easier incline, where we flatlined, and we're trying to do, are you getting this with my hand? She was great. We're trying to do this. Makes sense? But they started here. So that's why it's hard to catch up in the rankings, I think, one.
Thanks. Is that it?
Thank you, Julie, and your team. Fabulous. Just a general question, because I'm not that well-versed in how the statistics are achieved. Once a certain grade level moves on, how do you measure the next grade level that comes up in that category?
So like in math grade four?
Math grade four, that grade moves on. Then how do you measure that next fourth grade in math, or comm arts, or whatever the category is?
I think you're asking the same questions that teachers wrestle with, which is, you know, when they get the data back, they don't have that group anymore. The way the data is reported is just exactly as you said it. It's just third grade, communication arts for that point in time. And then as far as the state's concerned, they really don't look at that, except for, remember I mentioned the growth model that we do, we're able to get credit for kids being proficient, even if they're not quite at the bar. Currently, the only way the state considers previous performance is through growth. So that if a student comes in, and I'm going to use my hands too, Kathy, if a student comes in well below proficient their first testing year, we have four years to get them to proficient. And so they do gauge that student over time. But other than that, really, it's just an annual view of that year, that grade, that subject, and then on to the next.
Thank you.
Really, and I think that was a great question, and it's something that Dr. MBE and Kathy Blackmore, and I think a lot of people in the district wanted to get at, is how can we maybe get a more precise measurement? In other words, one, where we're taking the same cohort of kids and actually seeing how those kids did. And so actually this year, and I'm not sure how white they did themselves publicly, but we did do some growth analysis in the district, where we essentially just looked at teachers and what was their, the MAP score that those kids were coming into the classroom with, and then what was the MAP score that they were leaving that classroom with. And we could actually then do a growth, in quotation marks, because there's a lot of different ways to do growth analysis, but essentially, that's what we were trying to get at, how would that particular?
And my team, thankfully, reminded me that in your, in your packet, and we did not address this in the presentation, but you do have on page 5.1 in the appendix, an example of how internally, this isn't produced by the state, but internally, we take a look at our students as a cohort group. It's a loose cohort, because it's not just, you know, exactly the same students as students move in. But we take a look at our performance in math and communication arts, and you do have copies of that. Essentially, as you look at that, if you just jump to the very far right column, and you look at, you want to look for blues and greens, that would indicate that either by cohort, which is what's represented on page 5.1, or on page 5.2, you see that in a different view, looking at an instructional view over time. So one way is looking at the students over time. The next view is looking at that same grade level and content area over time. And those tell us two different things. And teachers use these reports. Lisa Meredith, Tim Hudson are very good about, you know, sitting down with teachers and just walking through what this data means for them as they work on their continuous improvement. And I was answering like Desi would have instead of like Parkway.
And I think our goal is not only to watch kids, because we want kids growing every year, no matter where they start. And Denise was back here about to jump out of her seat. When you get a pre-assessment and they get 20 out of 22, do something differently. Don't teach. Do you see where we're, so moving all kids, even our most advanced kids. This also is a way to look at your curriculum. Is it aligned? Do you see patterns happening all the time in third grade? Does that help? So it's not only watching kids, but also looking at your curriculum over time. And this is the document Tim and Lisa and Becky Langrill have worked on to help us do that.
Okay.
Great job. Thank you so much for making this all a little clearer. This is kind of, this is kind of hard to read. You're not, you don't have a degree in statistics. But I have a question about eighth and ninth grade Algebra I. And are the eighth and ninth graders thrown into one pot, or are they looked at separately?
It's a very good question.
Because I think I remember last year when we looked at the results with Kathy, that the eighth graders did remarkably better than the ninth graders. And I can imagine that a more advanced math student would tend to do better.
Right.
No matter what grade they're in. But then again, some of them take it in eighth grade and then repeat it in ninth grade. So how do you all work all that out?
Actually, the state does work that one out for us. Maybe not the way we would have told them to, but they do have a plan for that one. And what they do is, in eighth grade, if the students take it early, or even seventh, and I know we have students who take Algebra I even sooner. The requirements around end-of-course exams are when you complete the objectives for the course. So that's the point that we would administer that exam. You will see, as you look at your appendix, you actually have school-by-school results for our middle schools. You have, at the very bottom, you have Algebra I results. And in fact, we have two schools that had 100% of their students. The literal meaning of No Child Left Behind, Southwest Middle and West Middle, both had 100% of their students in Algebra I, scoring proficient or advanced, without any growth measures, anything else. So that's remarkable. Those scores are banked until they go to high school. So once the student has been a high school student at whatever school, if they move out of district, they're banked and go somewhere else. But hopefully, they stay with us, and those scores are then attributed the following year to that school. Does that make sense?
To that high school.
To that high school.
Okay.
So this was the first year that high school had the benefit of the banked scores of kids who typically do much better in Algebra I than some other kids.
And are you playing that out for the impact that has on your middle school? So think about, go ahead and explain that, because you explained the bank of the highest scores goes to the high school.
Right, but they're not, they're not looking at that, are they, for the middle school?
Middle school, actually, the kids have to double test. If they're in Algebra I, they test in the Algebra I end-of-course. They also take the eighth grade, seventh grade, whichever grade MAP, which is pretty exhausting for the kids. And it's difficult, too, because their curriculum that year has been Algebra I. It hasn't been all of the foundational concepts that are covered within eighth grade math. Now typically, they do pretty well, because they're good math students, but it is a challenge. Is that what?
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Chris?
Thank you very much. I don't know if you noticed, but the trend really seemed to change once Bruce Majors joined the board. I'm kidding.
It's the major effect.
I think Mark Twain said there were lies, blank lies, and statistics. Go ahead. Sorry. Well, you're doing a great job of filling Chi Lin's shoes, and we really appreciate you being part of the district and helping us with this. It goes without saying that this kind of achievement, there have to be some great teachers behind it. Obviously, if a class of students have a poor teacher, then achievement has got to suffer too. So just help me understand a little bit, what are we doing with our teachers then to make them these motivators and people that help move this stuff along? Is it the online curriculum? Is it technology? Is it just that they're?
I'm thinking of several people that could answer that. It's either staff development, or it might be one of our principals that's here tonight. So I'll just let, I'll step aside and see who comes to the mic.
Hi. One of the things that we got better at doing is looking at data and sitting down and having those candid conversations about student achievement. K5, a lot of pressure on our three-through-five teachers, so we talked more in-depth about that. And then we went further and looked at where those gaps were. And I know for Hannah and McKelvey in Piermont initially, we kind of went through setting a goal for the entire building and working K5 again on that, getting teachers and teams, doing a lot of job-embedded development. We talked about collaborative learning labs, where you use your classroom teachers and in your building and your students, and you push into those classrooms and actually work with teachers on moving forward in those areas where you see a pattern of a deficit. And then, again, having book studies and book talks and coming back to the table again and reassessing. We had, a lot of us had our students setting goals for themselves. And as young as, you know, kindergarten and second grade, we had students setting goals for themselves and then giving them immediate feedback on their performance. And so it's a lot of hard work across the board, but somebody else can add to that as well.
I feel like I was just called on the carpet. We were very, very intentional at looking at our data. And last year in particular, we sat down with all the teachers of the MAP-tested areas, and we prepared a data packet for them. And my emphasis has always been with the teachers, and I'm stealing a line from Dr. Senti, "Data should be used as a flashlight, not a hammer." And we let the teachers know that we're trying to improve, we're trying to get better, but by the same token, we really need to examine it to help inform our practice.
Well, you've done a great job there, Dr. Fanner. That's wonderful. What do you have to do to become an AP teacher? Can anybody become one, or?
To become an AP teacher, they do AP training, basically say that you want to do it. And then after a week long, intensive training to learn the curriculum, and then usually they go back for more training later on.
And it's, and Mary's been working with us too. Boy, Mary, where'd she go?
Oh, dear.
Mary's been working with us too on even hiring, looking at the qualifications, and Desi and I have talked about this, hiring people for AP classes, because we're having that phenomenon right now that many of you knew in our high schools, that our teachers who've been teaching AP are retiring. I mean, Lou jokes that Central High is a perfect example, that over time, you get so good at that curriculum. And the AP development, when we, Liz started this probably three or four years ago, just we picked up the tab, you know, building principals, we're trying to get a little bit here, and a little bit there, and a little bit there, and finally development just said, "This is great development, required for that AP teacher," and then going back more and more. And what's interesting about AP is it is a guaranteed viable curriculum, and there is a common assessment at the end. And so we're learning a lot by listening to our AP, but it's very, very, Tim, help me, but so content knowledge has to be very, very deep. And sometimes that comes with some experience and a lot of development. But we have that as a goal to look at them.
Well, we, I know we asked questions, and, but we have a lot of confidence in the group of educators that are here, and it's showing in what you're doing, so thank you very much.
Stand fast, Kathy.
Follow-up.
I have a follow-up for Craig. Craig, you.
You're back on the car. Back on the car.
I do have to tell a story about Craig.
Twice in one night, maybe a record.
Just because I'm making him come up here. Was it a year ago or two years ago? Because we are changing structures and making decisions, and you made decisions about the middle school day and content. And I think it was a year ago, he said, "If you do this, Kathy, I'm going to make AYP." And so I stand here publicly and say, "You did it. You did it." He knew what needed to be done, and it was just getting everything together in resources and talent, and he did it. Just because I'm making him come up here. Was it a year ago or two years ago? Because we are changing structures and making decisions, and you made decisions about the middle school day and content. And I think it was a year ago, he said, "If you do this, Kathy, I'm going to make AYP." And so, I stand here publicly and say, "You did it. You did it." He knew what needed to be done, and it was just getting everything together in resources and talent, and he did it. Now, answer the question.
We're doing a great job in comarts and math in middle school, so how do we bring up the other content areas that we're not so stringently tested on? We don't have that good data. What do we do for those teachers?
Well, I think we do have good data, the common assessment data. We have common assessments in science and social studies, as you know. And we are really becoming more intentional this year at South Middle at looking at those assessments. And I meet, I meet with my curriculum leaders, I will be meeting with the core curriculum leaders three times during the course of the year. The first time was just basically to set the stage, what the year's going to look, look like. And then, the second and third meetings, we really will be diving into the data.
Thank you.
And, you know, not to leave out our other coordinators, you can sit down. We are looking, we are looking in all our content areas at common assessments across the district. And it just takes time. The reason we only brought math to you is it needs to be in PARs, it needs to be in there for district data about three years. We need to do a study like Nathan did. We're not going to bring it to you as reliable data till we're sure that it is. So, hopefully, in about a year, a year? Look at Lisa Meredith. You'll see comarts data coming forward, and then maybe that same year or another year, our science, we're giving a pre and post, and we need to do better in science. We'll get that data to you. But Sandy's working with fine arts teachers, she has art common assessments. Ron, Ron? Good, I keep calling people. Ron's assessments are on PARs, and we're going to give that just about one more year. He's got fitness data, and if you look on PARs, we were at a school today at Central High. Tim, you might have to come up here, be careful. The PE teachers, the physical education teachers at Central High have set goals of where their fitness data is, and that's what's coming out of common assessments in all the content areas. And it's, it's changing the culture that it is a flashlight and it's not a hammer, because when you poured the school data into PARs, you have a district comparison. And, and that's how you know how you're performing. So, common assessment is in the core, we're starting a little bit sooner in the core, but it's going into every content area. Because it's good data, teachers can look at it together and say, "Here's a pattern, here's where we need to do better." So, it's all the coordinators behind you. Give us a few more years, and we'll have more up there.
Thank you.
Any other follow-ups?
Well, Kathy, I just want to say, I second that emotion from your introduction. None of this is easy, requires looking in a mirror and, and facing ourselves in a, in that professional flashlight and, and making some fundamental changes. And the, the board understands that is, that is never an easy thing, and we're indulging in some of that ourselves. So, it certainly appears to be paying dividends, and to me, I've got my pin appropriately mounted close to my heart. So, thank you and thank everybody on that front.
And then, Dr. Collins, I did have a, a couple of specific questions. First off, on your IMSIP report section regarding the advanced and career ed courses as a percentage of the total credits.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm assuming it's some sort of accounting anomaly, but there was, in '07, it was 90.5%, where historically, it was in the 60s. And then, it looks like back to the 60s, and then we're in the 70s now. On an upward trend, I know.
Right.
What, is, did something change in how?
Yes.
Things were counted?
And I am not finding that chart right in front of me, but I do know what you're talking about.
Page 19 of the Bound Report.
Page 19. There is a change in how the data is reported. And in fact, the first iteration of this report, which didn't end up in your hands, excuse me, you said 18?
It was 19 of the, but I'm looking at the Bound Report, so.
Okay.
Not your slides.
Initially, this data had looked really quite poor, and it has been since corrected, and that's what's corrected in your packet here. So, currently, we're at 78.6% for the, for those two measures. The data reporting prior to 2008 was, I'm not going to say completely the honor system, but it was certainly less scientific than what it became in 2009 and 2000, or 2008 and 2009. So, this one's always a year behind, just due to the nature of the follow-up study that it is. And so, what you're seeing is actual student surveys. That's how that data is collected, through 180-day follow-up. Prior to that, districts had a little more leeway in terms of how they collected students' plans, putting that kind of in the air, for what they would do post-secondary. Now, it's actual data, in terms of survey data. So, we hope that it would stay that 78.6 mark or higher. We did drop last year, probably, I'm guessing, we did not go back and, and reanalyze that data at that time.
Okay. And then, I think similar vein is the Parkway percentage of total graduates in college or field of study, and that's page 22 of the Bound Report.
And I actually, oops.
I notice we've, there's a downward trend from 97 through, or from 2007 through 2009. And I guess my question would be, is that anything we're doing, or is that economics?
And I'm glad you mentioned it, because I just answered the wrong question, so I'm going to answer the right question. The answer I just gave was for this chart.
Okay.
This is the follow-up data, when we actually have to do surveying and contact students individually. So, this is more scientifically accurate, and will probably stay about where it is, although we are still exceeding the IMSIP requirement. I answered the wrong question.
Okay, so that's, that's not a reflection of fewer kids going to college?
No.
Because of the current economy here?
There, there was a drop in percent of students going to college, and I do have that theory, that it was because of that.
Okay.
Can I help?
Can I clean up my last one?
Yeah. Let's just look at page 22, because I think it's important, because you have now picked out the two standards we didn't get high on. So good, I know what you're doing. All right, if you'll look at page 22, look at the explanation of the standard, known as graduate follow-up, requires that no fewer than 82.3% of district graduates attend college or enter a career, there it is, that's the highlight, aligned with their high school career education courses. So, these are called, I wish Jennifer was with us, Stanford, concentrators. So, they have to take Accounting I, Accounting II, and then, they have to go into that career. And then, it's, we have to follow those to see. We do have a phenomena, as other people do, of that decreasing because of the increased requirements and credits. That's part of it. You can't concentrate in accounting like we used to. It's the crowded day phenomena in high school that we have to keep looking at, and then to follow them and find out if they go into that career. So, it's not so much about graduates, but taking the courses in high school and following it in their career. It's a Perkins Career Tech Education. Does that make sense? So, we're looking at school.
So, we're penalized when 18-year-olds change their mind?
Sort of.
Wow.
Yeah. Right. And we do, we have a committee, I'm looking at Nathan, because he's part of it, and Julie Harrison and others. We do have to figure out a way to follow up with our graduates. We need to work with our alumni association, and they're looking at a plan, and, and we are even thinking about Facebook. There's got to be a way to get these kids and find out, "What are you doing?", and get some good information back. So, I know Nathan's on, on top of that piece. Now, do you want to fix the other one?
If you'll go back to page 19.
Right.
This one also is due to a change in the requirements, but it's not having to do with survey data. In this case, what we used to do is be able to report that based on our own calculations. What happened in 2008 is that now, through a very complex process, and I'm very thankful I don't have to do this, but the course schedules for each student, in addition to a lot of other data, are actually uploaded through the MOSIS Core Data File to the state. So, there's absolutely no wiggle room in terms of, you know, it's these courses with these kids, and it's uploaded. And there's a lot that we still have to do in terms of coding the courses appropriately to make sure that they give us credit for those being advanced. And we did have a data correction, so I was partially right, but answering kind of the wrong question there. We did correct that data in time for the, the final report.
And this is when Sharon Hennessy on the, in charge of our MOSIS data, and Debbie Cloud, our Core Data Person, and the curriculum coordinators had to go back into every course and look at the code. Did we have the right code? So, we had to do some data cleanup, and you saw it change, but now we know what we're going to have to follow it. So, that just.
There were code variations between our four high schools, is that?
It's hard, but we're getting, but we're getting closer. New codes, nine-to-12 course or an 11-12 course, so we're getting, we're getting closer.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification. And then, I did have one follow-up question for Dr. Tyson, so.
Okay.
Dr. Collins, if you want to relax, please.
Okay.
The, the common assessments and, and I believe it was the math ones, and you were, through regression analysis, determined we're at 85%, give or take predictive of MAP scores. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And actually, we, we use the three common assessments that were given for each of those grade levels, but we also included, to be fair, we also include, and to get the best prediction, we included several demographic variables as well. So, whether or not a student was gifted, for example, would have entered into that equation, since that's data that we had access to. So, we did, we did also use those types of data points, just because that would make us, it would be a better predictor.
Okay.
But yes, it was a regression analysis, and we could've done it just with the common assessment, but we probably wouldn't have gotten quite as high a number.
Well, I certainly think that, that sure sounds like a, a really bright flashlight, if I might, and I, I'm not a betting man, Wes, but, I mean, 85% is, I, I think we can put some resources behind those.
Absolutely, and I would just follow up by saying that we also ran a reliability analysis and a validity analysis, essentially comparing those scores to the student, the actual students' MAP scores. And you can compare those things statistically, and, and we've discovered that you end up with a coefficient, and we had the right coefficient, it was right where it needed to be, so we're happy.
Well, outstanding work on your part, and, and more importantly, Kathy, the, the fact that we've developed that tool in Parkway, I think back to when I was first on the board and your, and your multicolored bullseye, yeah, that's, that's the Parkway piece, and that, that's what really makes it exceptional, and I.
I feel like I was just calling the teachers who were created for the baby. Because what we have to remember is predicting, and if you can predict, then you can do something with your instructor. And that, you can't lose the sight of the kid and how we respond, and that's our teachers. So, great team.
That's, that is very powerful, and I, I thank you all. That's outstanding stuff. And now, one, one final query that I'm not actually going to ask the question, but I think there were lots of people in district waiting with bated breath for the third grade and MAP scores from Carmen Trails. And I realize that nationwide, this policy has fallen in disfavor, but I think I will, given the courses I attended at Carmen Trails and other schools on single gender education, I'm going to decide to don't ask, don't tell on that topic, but I still would really like to know what, what, if anything, we found out there.
Girls are smarter.
I will skirt the question, because I think I'm supposed to. However, if you look at your appendix, page 4.16, you do have school-by-school data.
I remember that.
So, I don't know that I can completely answer your question, probably, that sounds like a study for Nathan. But you could take a look at data for Carmen Trails if, if that was of interest, it's in your package, so.
And if I'm being too cryptic, we do have single gender education that's been in place for those third graders since they were in first grade, so. Inquiring minds want to know, but I understand that is not necessarily the be-all and end-all of the exercise, so I'm not going to ask. Any other follow-up questions? Dr. Collins, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Outstanding presentation.
Appreciate it.
All right, now, in the interests of brevity, those that don't need to be here for the, the next session, which I think is probably a large majority, if, if you'd like to take a little time, and we'll, we'll take a short recess here, and you all can depart. And while you're doing that, I did want to recognize a few folks here this evening. I think, Dr. Papilio, you have a, a shadow this evening, is that correct?
Yes, I do. I have Ms. Dan Newman, who is a doctoral student at Maryville, and she's been here for a more than a year, just going to spend a little time with her.
Well, welcome, future Dr. Newman. No pressure. And I think we had some students from Maryville, or?
Umsel.
Umsel. Well represented, my wife's an Umsel, Umsel grad, so glad to have you here. And I think the others had already departed, so.
All right, item 14.0, Policy Review, 14.01, IL.BPNG, Program Evaluation. Dr. Tyson and Kathy Blackmore.
All right, President Major, Vice President Jacob, Dr. Senti, Ms. Calanda, and Board of Directors. It's my great pleasure to be here this evening to kind of lead a little bit of a work session here. Before I do that, though, I would like to say that I was privileged to be a part of the Hiring Committee for Julie Collins. Kathy Blackmore allowed me to take part in that, and, and we picked a fantastic person. I know that you just saw tonight what she's capable of, but being over at ISC, I'm actually a suite mate of hers, so she's in the office right next to mine, and we spent a lot of time collaborating. And she has a fantastic sense of humor, a great command of assessment, and actually, one of the strengths that Ms. Blackmore did not share with you is her "WU", which, if, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Strength Finder. WU stands for Winning Others Over, and, and that's one of her strengths, and I see it all the time, and she does a fantastic job with that. So, I just wanted to say again that, that she's doing a fantastic job, and I'm really happy to be working closely with her. The task tonight is for me to quickly, I, I don't want to belabor the point, so I just want to quickly go through some of the proposed changes that we have for program evaluation. And there's about four of them that I really want to highlight, and then, if Kathy wants to talk more specifically when she does the actual policy, then obviously, she can get into that. But for our purposes right now, I just want to share quickly four, four proposed changes. Then I want to talk a little bit about the responsibility structure for program evaluations that, that we're proposing, and then talk a little bit about how Project Parkway fits into this. And then, at the very end, there may be just some time for you to ask any questions, if you have any, about some of these proposed changes, offer any feedback that you may have. And then, we do have a, a recommendation that, for a motion, if, if you would like me to help with that, but otherwise, you guys, I think you have it in front of you. So, I'm going to go ahead here and start. This is about program evaluation and curriculum cycle matrix. And I'm going to go ahead and flip it over here. The, the first big change that, that we're proposing is the idea of the preliminary discussions prior to evaluation, and we actually already took part in one of these last time with Early Childhood with Gene Manning. And so, you're, you're kind of familiar with, with how the preliminary discussion operates and kind of what its purpose is, but really, it's just a chance for us to really understand what the Board of Education, you all would like to know, what you would like us to study, to research, if we're putting out surveys, maybe what types of items we should include in there, you know, anything with the data, I really want to know this or that. That's really what, what we're hoping with, with the preliminary discussions, and obviously, we have the preliminary discussion, and then it's not for some months until we actually have the evaluation report. So, that's the first one, and I think probably one of the most important is this concept of preliminary discussions, and I think it's just a fantastic idea, so I hope you agree. The, the second one here is that in the past, the district has typically conducted between two to three evaluations, and we're looking to increase that to more like three to five in the coming years. We, we really just have a lot of programs and a lot of curricular areas that we want to go ahead and, and get some evaluations done on, and so, we really think it's in the best interest of the district that we up that a little bit to more like three to five of those evaluations a year. We also, this year, plan to offer six Friday memos, and really, they're focusing on a variety of issue, of initiatives, but, but essentially, those Prop R initiatives, I know that the Board of Education is interested in how that money is being spent, and so, we have them listed out there, the ones that we really want to get into. The first one up is progress monitoring coaches, and then the PIT team, the Technology Integration Specialist, or the TIZs, high school TAs, math specialists, and diversity in action. I tried to spread those out in equal increments, just to give us time to kind of get through it and, and get the data collected that we needed, so that we could. integration specialist or the TIZs, high school TAs, mass specialists and diversity in action. I tried to spread those out, um, in equal increments just to give us time to kind of get through it and, and get the data collected that we needed so that we could get a report together, but we're looking at, uh, what is that, every month and a half or so, maybe six weeks or so, uh, to, to hopefully be coming forward with, uh, with a, a Friday memo that can talk about, uh, each of these initiatives. And then we also, I, I don't know if, uh, how many of you are familiar, I think probably most of you, but we used to do a state of the district report and, uh, I believe the last one was done in two thousand and seven. And, uh, really we're looking to eliminate that report. And one of the reasons is, is that we think, uh, just with the whole structure of continuous improvement, uh, really that it's not meeting that need, uh, in the district and, and that we might be able to use my time and, uh, and the time of, of other people in the district a little bit more effectively if we just concentrate on increasing the number of evaluations that we talked about earlier and, and making sure that we get to these, uh, these six Friday memos. So that's kind of the thought behind that with, uh, with the district, uh, state of the district report. And then into the responsibility structure, really this doesn't change a whole lot, uh, really at all from, from the way it was, but, but the, uh, the curriculum coordinators or the directors for each of the areas that we're talking about will be the ones really responsible for the report to the board. Um, and then I would be responsible really to assist in that process with the research design, the data gathering, the data analysis, and then, you know, generating the reports that the coordinator or the director could use to then, uh, have, have a more complete report to share with, uh, with you, the Board of Education. And then finally here, Project Parkway fits into this because we do have a task force working right now on the efficient use of existing resources and it's headed by, uh, Dr. Jenny Markhort over at North High. And I know that they're right in the midst of their work actually with this, uh, with this particular task force. And it is possible that this task force will come forward with some additional recommendations for the Board of Education regarding, um, the evaluation process, uh, policy guidelines, matrix and timeline. So I just wanted to offer that to you and let you know that that is a possibility as well, uh, with Project Parkway. All right. And I, oh, I do have, and, and you had it with your board docs, but we do have a couple of, um, links here that we're just gonna quickly connect to and I don't think you'll be able to see it on the screen, but you should be able to see it in front of you. And it just kind of goes through and, and lays out from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, um, kind of what the, what the cycle would be. And so we're really looking at every five to six years, uh, making sure that we're, we're touching each of the curricular areas and then also, uh, each of the departmental areas within the district. So, uh, so the, uh, the reason it's color-coded like it is, is because the red would stand for the preliminary discussion and then the blue would be the actual, uh, evaluation report to the board. And then if I could get the other, the evaluation schedule, very good. And this really just, uh, this kind of shows what we had already talked about with the Friday memos on the bottom there. And then really just says for this, you know, for this year right now, this school year, early childhood, um, communication arts, the alternative programs, those are really the ones that we're gonna, uh, be focusing on. And then also we've added in there transportation, uh, as well. So, um, so I think that's about all I really wanted to share with you. And then if you have any questions or if, if you have, uh, any ideas or any follow-up, I would be happy to, to work with you on that.
Well, I guess first off, a timing question. You mentioned, uh, the Project Parkway.
Right.
Potential input, do we know a, a timeframe even roughly on when, when that might arrive?
You know, I know that, um, I know that they're working fast. Kathy, I don't know if you have anything to say on this.
We hope, December, January, to begin to get, um, some reports back from that group. That will probably be a group that continues over time and monitors from the steering committee. And I did talk to Jenny specifically about this report, she has a draft of the policy and guidelines. I think where they're leading right now, um, is that more specifics about what we would be looking at as we evaluate each program. Does that make sense? They may even give Nathan questions that are common in the program evaluations. That's the way Jenny feels like the group's going right now. Like what questions should we be asking on everything that we have that are similar across program?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
And that's where they are today?
I, I look at the existing policy and my head spins.
Yeah. I know, I know. It's one of those you wish you could just start all over and maybe we, we need to do that.
Well, does, does that influence, uh, we, we've got it, the, the policy on review this evening, uh, would you like to go with the existing changes and then, uh, address others as they come along or, or wait till we have one?
I think that's kind of where we're leaning.
Yeah. We had talked about that with Don and the feeling is right now, we need a policy and guidelines in place right now. Because as you look at that schedule, we have a few coming up already this year. So we really don't want to operate with the old one. So we, we need something in place for now.
That's, that's fine by me.
Okay. Now, one addition, I just wanted to mention through your chart and this just happened Monday, um, we did add for November tenth, preliminary conversations about communication arts. So I wanted you to know that. So on November tenth, we'll be talking about comarts and transportation in a preliminary conversation. We decided, we're kind of down the path already, the team started working together in the spring and summer, but I think we felt we might as well bring out, so what we'll do with comarts is say, here's what we know we're gonna study, what else do you have? So that'll happen on the tenth.
We'll bring our popcorn.
Okay.
Questions, uh, Ms. Feldman?
I'm just really glad that we're turning this stuff upside down and shaking it around a little bit and looking at it. I mean, that's the whole, it's kind of Project Parkway and it's just gonna make us stronger. So I'm glad we're doing this.
Anything else? Nope. Well, again, I would second, uh, Mrs. Mogerman's comments and certainly when I mentioned, uh, looking in the mirror for the board, looking in this policy, told us a lot of things we probably hadn't been doing for a while, uh, needed to be done and need, need to be done better. So, thank you very much and we'll, uh, we'll amend as necessary, but let's fire away on, uh, on what we've got to date.
So do we need approval for what Nathan just presented, Don, or?
Okay.
So do we want to go to policy questions?
Yeah, well, that's the next item on the.
Yeah, just.
Just roll right into it.
So I'm here and it is difficult to read. The program evaluation, uh, policy, IL BP, just with the addition of mission, vision, learning principles. So a very simple policy. Where the changes come in is the guidelines. And, um, with Nathan's help, and I did ask Elizabeth May to help because she's gonna be helping with the, the development of our, our directors and, and managers and the support staff side. So very simply, if you look at the guidelines, A is what we have been doing and started doing six years ago. So making the guidelines follow what we've been doing as far as reviewing curriculum and staff development and assessment, timeframes, just, and the preliminary dialogue. B really is the support programs for our support staff and if we, so we took some out that didn't belong and added what did belong, like, uh, communications, facilities, finance, food service, human resources, technology, transportation. So those are our support staff programs that will be reviewed. Tried to make the changes there, which more may come. And then C, and again, if you have suggestions for the title, these are related district programs that have direct support to the schools. And that's how we made C. And then you see our alternative programs. This is where you're also going to be able to check some achievement data, social, emotional data that have direct impact on kids. Our counseling program, discipline, prevention intervention. So that's how we reorganized A, B, and C. And D pretty much stayed the same. So just bringing all the other programs and departments up for evaluation in a cycle similar to what we've started doing with curriculum. Any questions?
Questions? Any specifics? Well, I think certainly this is a, a great first step, uh, that, as you mentioned earlier in the other discussion, I think, uh, having a, a set framework and expectations will certainly be beneficial down the road, uh, but I think those are best defined through the Project Parkway process instead of, uh, trying to brainstorm them at this level. And, uh, so thank you very much for these, uh, these inputs and.
I wanted to, um, tell you that I noticed in, uh, meeting room A at ISC, someone painted our new, um, mission statement on the wall. I don't know how that got there, but it was great. And when Mrs. Feldman and I were at the religious leaders meeting, um, it needs to be in that room. Where is it? So, so someone needs to get their paintbrush out or we need to make a poster or something, but it needs to be everywhere and, and I just loved seeing it in there.
It's just right in front of us no matter where we are.
It was great.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you again. And then that'll be moved to, uh, consent agenda for the next meeting? Is that soon enough?
Yes.
All right. Sixteen point O, call for a closed meeting, October twenty-seventh and November ten, two thousand and ten. May I have a motion in a second? That the Board of Education call for a closed meeting on Wednesday, October twenty-seven at six P.M. at the administration building for the purpose of considering, one, individually identifiable personnel records, perform, performance ratings and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, six-ten point zero-two-one point one-three. And on Wednesday, November ten, two thousand and ten, at six-thirty P.M. and/or immediately following, the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communications between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, six-ten point zero-two-one point one. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, six-ten point zero-two-one point three. Three, preparations on behalf of the district or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, six-ten point zero-two-one point nine. And four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, six-ten point zero-two-one point one-three.
So move?
Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Mrs. Appleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Castillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes. Motion carries six-O. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So move.